Good afternoon. Welcome to my very first club meeting as your president. I'm both humbled, excited, and it doesn't take much to get me nervous, but this has sure done a wonderful job at doing it. Welcome to the greatest club in the world. With that, we'd like to get things started. Okay, if we can get Steve to make your way up for invocation. Galen's gonna do our pledge, and Kathleen will do our milestones.
Thank you, Madam President. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, as we gather together as friends in the spirit of Rotary Fellowship and Service, we ask for your blessings. In the words of this psalmist, "How good and how pleasant it is for brothers and sisters to sit down together in unity and in peace." Bless all who are in our prayers and all who should be in our thoughts. To the sick and suffering, send your hope. To the forgotten and the lonely, send your love. To the confused and distressed, send your light. To the weary and the wronged, send renewed strength. To the pursuers of justice, send wisdom and faith. To the seekers of peace, send unwavering resolve. To those assembled in this room and our loved ones, send tranquility and joy. And to the world, send your blessings of peace. May your radiant spirit guide us and our loved ones all of our days. Amen.
Galen, I can leave the pledge. That's okay.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good afternoon. Our milestones today, let's see, John Sullivan, his July 12th, our birthday, sorry, is today, and Randall Suri, July 12th, and Jean Davenport, July 14th. Spouses' birthdays are Janelle McNeil's spouse, Eddie, July 13th. Anniversaries is Ron and Cheryl Barrick, 58 years, July 12th. And Erin Ross is club anniversaries, one year, July 9th, and Brye Nguyen, July 9th. Okay, visitors, guests, would you please stand and let Galen come to you with the microphone so we can hear all about you? My guests, we need to know the introduction in this group. We are all very, we're a wonderful group, based in Georgetown, according to Tita.
It's a pleasure to interview John Sloan, who's here, joining us today. Just too embarrassed to interview him. John Sloan.
Any guests, visiting Rotarians, joining us on the Zoom? Let me change my view here real quick so I can see all of everybody's beautiful faces. All just a wonderful group of Rotarians, it looks like, with us today. Thank you, everybody. Oh, and Carolyn, always, we just see her name, right? And she's just part of Georgetown now. Thank you, Carolyn Holloway, for coming to us from Sun City. We appreciate you being here with us. Thank you. Go to the next. All right, recognition and announcements. Well, little did I know, we were gonna have a pretty busy seven days. We're gonna highlight a few of the things that we've been up to. So we tackled one of the coolest ramps that I think I've seen us build. That's a pretty intense turn there, but we appreciate everybody who came out to help build that ramp. Thank you. Find yourself. Let's give them a round of applause for that service project. And they braved the heat, and they sold some flags, and they had the best view for the fireworks in town. So special thanks to everybody that went out to the Certoma, Fourth of July, to help with the Field of Honor setup and display. It was very well received, and we thank everybody. So those of you that attended, we very much appreciate that. Thank you. All right, and with that, if we could please invite John Sloan, who is a very dear friend of mine in a bunch of different YMCA circles, as well as a personal friend, and Will Williams, Rotarian, red badge, we gotta work on that, Will. We gotta make that classification talk here very soon, and Jeannie Cox to the front. We have a very special presentation from the Greater Round Rock Community Foundation, the Hood Endowment. So, as you know, last year, the foundation joined us as a supporter of the Field of Honor. They helped us bring the Vietnam Wall to our fifth annual field, and they have not let down their commitment and passion to this wonderful program that we host. And we're very excited, as the presentation will include a tremendous gift. Jeannie's about to do the big flip around. They're bestowing us a sponsorship of $7,000. So very much appreciating all that they do for us. Will, would you like to say anything?
Well, on the behalf of the Round Rock Foundation, John didn't wanna say anything. He's a little shy, but my first sergeant, the first sergeant never shied, believe me. But on behalf of the Round Rock Community Foundation, we would like to say this is a great, great honor to be a part of this. Mr. Hood, the Hood Endowment, Mr. Hood was a veteran himself. He wanted to make sure that every, all veterans that he possibly could help would be taken care of, and this is definitely what he imagined. So thank you all.
Just so you don't think I'm too shy, I will say something. If you don't know, this is First Sergeant Will Williams. And if you don't think he's not a veteran, you'll look on his feet today, and he's got his combat boots on. But he's been a great member of the Hood Foundation and the Round Rock Community Foundation, and we're just proud of what y'all do over here in Georgetown with this, these flags and stuff. And so it's a privilege for us to help out. So thank you very much.
It's always fun to start your year with a big check, I think, so we'll just keep that momentum going. That's awesome. We'll go to the next slide. Okay, this new face to membership this year. Here comes Dennis Brown. Dennis, what have you got for us this week?
Thank you, Kat, very much. I want to, first of all, thank George. George Oliver has been an amazing mentor for me. I joined about two years ago, and George said to me, you know, "One of the things you have to do for your red badge is get on a committee." He says, "I'm looking for members." I said, "George, I'm with you right now." So George has, for the last two years, been preparing me for this. So I hope I do you well by how I lead the membership committee, because you have done a super job getting me ready. So thank you very much, George. Also want to thank all of you for the trust you placed in me to lead the membership committee. I think it's a very, very important committee, and I look forward to working with all of you during this 2022-2023 year. I'm looking for members, so I need a co-chair, and I need some members. So if you're interested, please just see me. If we divide up the work, we can get a whole lot done without any of us having to do too much, but we can be so impactful on the Georgetown Rotary Club. One of the things we want to do is, I want to come up with prospect cards that I can hand out to everybody, so that when you're out and about and you meet somebody, you are welcome to talk to them and invite them, have them come lunch, but maybe you'd like us to do that, and we can do it. So, you know, somebody that, you know, you would like to have somebody call and invite them to come to the Rotary meeting and maybe become a member. And so I'll talk a little bit more about the prospect card once we get it actually printed out and get it in your hands, so that you can help us, help you make this club even bigger and better. By the way, I found out this morning that in three years, we have to be at 150, so I really do need your help. We're working on the brochure, myself and George and Galen and Matt, and so we'll be rolling that out very, very soon. And one final thing, we're gonna ask the sponsors of new members to take a little more of a role in moving the red, moving the new member through the red badge. As you heard the mayor a couple weeks ago, he was two years into his red badge. No more two years in the red badge. So between the committee helping to nudge them along, I think if the sponsor helps also, we can really get them through in a very, very short period of time. And finally, I said finally, but I do have one more thing. We will be continuing what George started, which I think is such a great idea. We'll be recognizing periodically those sponsors who have brought in new members to the Georgetown Rotary Club. So again, thank you very much. Enjoy working with you this coming year, and we will be in touch, because we want you to tell us who we need to be talking to about becoming a member.
We have lots of torches being passed today. Some of these gentlemen have had a couple test runs. I said earlier, it was always easier to sub for Nathan than to actually have to worry about all the details about 45 minutes ago, because those things worked out. Well, we have a new voice at Sergeant at Arms. We owe Dennis a great deal of appreciation and respect, so thank you, Mr. Dennis, for all that you've done for our club. And I know Mr. Galen is competitive as he can be, but has also got a Rotary heart and a Rotary spirit. So, sir, Sergeant at Arms, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm gonna work from the fore today, mainly because I'm a fairly new member, and I don't know a lot of you by face and name. I became an actual transfer member last August out of South Carolina. And before that, I was a member of the year from the San Antonio, and I belonged to the San Antonio Rotary Club, which at that time had 620 members. It was the largest club in the world at the time, and I transferred out to a smaller club of different members, because it was a bit of a challenge to be in that club. My background, real quick, I was a licensed for about 15 years, then I was a professional fundraiser for 25 years. And I do understand that we're doing today with other clubs. But what we're doing today, at that time, if you're actually here happy, and if you'd like to donate something, and the purpose is for some women that don't know exactly what it's standing for, it's, the money's going to Colby O'Plus. Colby O'Plus has been a huge part of Rotary from back in the eighties, and it's had a really impact in the world. And the money you raise on these meetings goes directly to that program, to people. And I don't know what the budget that this year has been established, but I think it might be, you know, I think for a Colby O'Plus, about $5,000. About $5,000. And of course, Dennis is a great celebrity, like I always, has that goal with no problem with whatever. But it's not about Dennis or myself, it's actually about you. So, anyway, I would just like to ask anybody if they're happy about anything, or if they're worried about anything, or if they're sad about anything, or know they sent something, or anything, or whatever it costs. But first, first, we have a happy story from George. George, remind me of some of the stories.
Just a quick question. We have this nice Mexican food, we remind everyone the questions we have for each year. If you had to between eating a taco a day the rest of your life or being a turkey or a boy, would you choose crispy tacos or soft tacos? I just heard this joke last night, I'm trying to have a person, he laughs. The guy walks several different people around when they, his wife is standing there. She goes, "What's wrong with you?" You go, "What?" She goes, "You're drunk." "I am not. You are." He goes, "I am not bloody drunk." And she goes, "Okay, can you tell me?" He goes, "Absolutely." So he turns to the clock on the wall, and he says, "I am not bloody drunk." Thank you. Okay. Start anywhere, Jack.
I'm very happy. I'm very happy. I'm gonna give $50, which sounds small, because my announcement is that Austin Feeney College Foundation has received their largest gift to the history of our foundation, $5 million from the University Federal Credit Union. So I'm very excited that it's been sent. So many things.
Maybe with you more, Dennis? As you say, yes, I'm really happy. Oh, oh, the anniversary cup. Hey, Will, how happy are you?
I am, I'm $58 happy for our anniversary. But then, my oldest nephew is 17 years old today. We add those together, and the man is like $79.
Very good.
Thank you, Galen. I'm happy today. Not necessarily for me, but for the rest of the family. And in honor of our 25 hours, and then for both a little happy and a little sad, I'll donate another $25. Thanks to everyone for everything you did in hosting us, thinking of COVID and COVID emergency. Can I finish? Roll it here. I saw a hand.
I'm happy that I'm a good parent. I'm 73 years old. Thanks for sending $3.
Anybody else? Ah. Leach?
Today, tomorrow's Christiane's birthday, her school, but she'll be 14 tomorrow. I know that my dad, so it's 14 for Christiane.
Might as well get in on it. I'm happy, because I have two extra tickets to the fish fry in Marble Falls. And I'm not gonna give those away, but I'm gonna give you $30, because that's what they cost. So, two tickets, see me, Randy Mongold, we're kinda sharing this, and we'll give them away. Tomorrow at 4 o'clock social, 5 o'clock dinner, Marble Falls, Lakeside, P. It's all written on the ticket.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? I have a selfish self-promotion for $20. Georgetown Library is hosting a sculpture show. It's the 15th Annual Texas Sculptures Society Show, and I'm lucky enough to have three pieces in the show. So if anybody has a moment, around the second floor in the middle, can't miss it, three pieces. And it runs for about another month and a half that day. A lot of great stuff there, and they're all, everything's insane. So if you want to buy my sculpture, it's for sale. And I'll give all the net proceeds to the project.
All right.
Anybody online?
No.
No? Okay.
We're good online, yeah? Yep. Joe nodded. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. Well, this is a very unique time for Rotary. Every year, the entire leadership of Rotary changes. That's 35,000 Rotary Club presidents, 532 district governors, and even the international president, who is our new one, is Jennifer Jones. I just want to also just thank Nathan again for being a very wonderful president, and you're about to be installed as past president, so your work is not done yet, but we appreciate all your leadership over the last year. All of our board members, if you guys would please make your way to the front, I would appreciate that. Past President Nathan Winston, President-elect Jeff Cartlich, President-nominee Roger Chapel, Sergeant-at-Arms Galen, Membership Chair Dennis Brown, VP of Full-Raising Jeannie Cox, Amy with our service. Sorry, I just sat in a meeting with them for like two and a half hours of strategic planning, so I feel like I've already said hi to them like six times. Frederick Gary Brown, Club Administration Peggy Brown, Racial Unity and Peace Building Ron Swain, our Executive Secretary Myra Page, our Rotary Foundation Randy Mongold, Todd Smith couldn't be with us today, Danny couldn't be with us today, Myra, Marissa, we see you on Zoom. She's joining us. So at this time, it is my privilege and esteemed honor to install you as the 2223 Rotary Club of Georgetown Board of Directors. Are you willing to fulfill the responsibilities of your office to the best of your ability in accordance with the constitutional documents of this club? If so, please answer with "I am." I will now administer the oath of office. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly pledge or affirm that I undertake except the duties of the office upon which I'm about to enter. Sorry, shifting for a photo here. Okay. And I will, to the best of my ability, support President Kat, work diligently for the betterment of my club, and to abide by the club's constitution and values. Please help me congratulate your new Rotary Board of Directors. And everybody from the board, get together, squeeze in there. Kat, squeeze in there. You should have been. I'm gonna get you. Okay. All right. They're getting their new name badges. That's very exciting. As you've noticed, we've entered a new Rotary year. We have a new Rotary theme. We have new Rotary colors. Change is evident every year as we enter Rotary. This is my opportunity to share a little bit more about myself. I was sharing with Nick just a few minutes ago at the beginning that I jokingly had said, "I better get my speech ready." This speech, or this moment of conversation with you, has actually weighed very much on my mind. And I've found that as far as it goes, I am a very mission-oriented leader. I find missions and causes that speak to my heart, and I get passionate, both with my time and my talent and my energy. But I am not a good politician. I find talking about myself and things of that nature make me a little uneasy, and so I'm gonna do my best to work through a little bit. I want to start roughly 1993, and this little girl that you see rocking the best Evel Knievel outfit that the local Dollar General had to provide, which I still have, and my sons have both taken pictures in it, because it was gender neutral. Everybody could be Evel Knievel in the 90s. Found yourself in a 4-H club, a 4-H club that my great-grandmother, who just turned 96, is still with us, started in the 50s, and my mother said, "Maybe you should take public speaking." Why? I was a cake decorating dropout. I was never gonna sew or be trapped in the basement during the month of July making a skirt that, as you can see, was never gonna get worn. I was into beef cattle, rocketry, geology, and she said, "Maybe public speaking would be a good fit for you." And if you recall anything about early 90s 4-H, Achievement Day was a big day, and my fingernails were never clean, and my clothes never stayed clean enough to actually get a blue ribbon and presentation. I'm proud to say I feel like I've come a long way from that, so I hope to keep my fingernails clean for each of you. I gave my first speech when I was eight, and it was titled "Laughter the Best Medicine." Why? I don't know about you, but a staple on the back of about every toilet in my house is a Reader's Digest, and now there's a trumpet that joins that, because sometimes reading is better than Facebooking or TikToking. And I am a sucker for every anecdote at the end of every story in a Reader's Digest, much like our jokes that we tell here. It's a fun thing to pass the time or to mind-check. I started that speech by saying something along the lines of, "When I was born, I shot out and bounced off the wall and bounced off the ceiling, and my dad is bald, and I skidded off of his head and landed in my mom's arms, and we made a big entrance." I don't remember much else of the speech, but it must have been good, because I won the speech competition that day. And I went to the state public speech competition, where I was going up against extremely well-spoken 16, 17, 18-year-olds who were using this as a scholarship opportunity. Here's this little eight-year-old in an Evel Knievel outfit trying to make everybody laugh. Well, we figured out that sometimes laughter is truly the best medicine, and I want to bring laughter and excitement to our Rotary. Go to the next slide. So I had to do a little deep dive into the things that I hold near and dear. So while being a 10-year 4-H member, because there's certain things in my family you must complete, there was no dropout of 4-H in eighth grade to become an FFA member your freshman year. That was highly frowned upon. I managed to complete both at the same time, and I was very proud of my experience with FFA. Now, FFA is wonderful. I don't want to brag. I think if I was in the family, I would be the one that would come back and run the family farm. Probably would have been a pretty good farmer. Actually, I probably would have loved it. I could run a couple thousand head of cattle and get along just great. Life had different plans and took me on a different journey. One thing I learned in FFA is that showing up matters, service is where the heart is, and you have to remember where you come from, and you have to bring those things with you to everything you do. As you can see, it was instilled upon me in a very young age that service matters. The work we do today will benefit my son's experience in life in 25 years. We're simply a steward of the time we're giving, and it is our job to do best with what we have. We very likely may make missteps, but we have to own that recovery and do better and work harder. And that is what I learned in that middle picture. That middle picture represents my home basketball court. I painted those lines, and every July, my mother repaints them as she awaits for me to return to my I painted those lines, and every July, my mother repaints them as she awaits for me to return to my home court. Every night, I shot a hundred free throws, a hundred three-pointers, a hundred left-handed layups, and a hundred right-handed layups. And we had a rule, we ended on a make. To this day, if you ask my sons whenever we're shooting baskets or we're doing an activity, what do we do? We end on a make. Might not be the prettiest shot, but if we went in, it's time for supper, it's time to move on. We never end on a miss. That's one of my goals this year for us. I want us to end everything on a make. I use really weird analogies, too. Please be prepared for them. I may say something like, we have to eat the stick today. I don't really know what it means either, but we're gonna do it, and it'll be okay. My grandmother was my very first basketball coach, and she taught me the art of the layup, the very coveted secret of one, two, three, pretty ballerina in order to make it. My grandfather had a different influence in basketball. He was quick to always tell me, it's a lot harder for the other girl to make free throws if she has tears in her eyes. So please, so please stop committing. If you're got, if you only have five, please make them count. Please stop committing a reaching foul seventy-five feet from the goal. It's not helping your team to keep your eye on where you need to be and when you need to play defense. And then there's Cat P. That was really my license plate growing up. My mother was the Farm Bureau agent, and her name was Nina P. She drove a great big red Suburban. So in a small rural community of sixteen hundred people, we stood out. We, they knew when the Farm Bureau lady was rolling in to sell some insurance or show up at a county fair. My sister was Rissa P. That was her license plate, and she broke about every rule you can think of. And I was always quick to point out when things were broken with her car that my dad had maybe overlooked that Sunday morning or her transgressions. She laid the road for me to understand. If you make a mistake, just tell the truth, wake mom up in the middle of the night. It's better that she didn't find out after church or when they walk into the insurance office on Monday morning and say, I saw your daughter this weekend. And then they gave me Cat P. For me, it was just my name. I was just Cat P. For everybody else in high school, it was the funniest joke that had ever happened. There was this girl driving around in a car, and it said Cat P. And I'm like, well, I'm Cat P. Um, the fun fact that I love about this is there's two of them, right? Because in Missouri, you had license on the front and the back. One of these license plates is still in my office. I keep it right there. The other one is still on the wall on the RAF Lake Innes Youth Center in Lake Innes, England, where I was blessed to be able to serve as a civilian for the forty-eighth Services Group. And we had license plates from all fifty countries, from all of our military families that were there. The Missouri license plate really sucked, to be honest with you. It was like nineteen ninety and like this burgundy and just like six random letters. And nobody knew who it came from. But I said, would you hang up Cat P? Sure, we'd hang up Cat P. So to this day, my second license plate still hangs on the wall of that youth center where I spent some of the most rewarding and tiresome and trying times. We walked kids to school every day. Sometimes we would walk them home, and they would go home with us because maybe their parent wasn't coming back that night. And we needed to be parents until their grandparents were able to successfully fly in. I saw witness the firsthand of what civilians do to step up, and I'm very honored that I have that as part of my journey. And I carry that with me with all the work that we do. Again, you have to be willing to serve, small, large, or big. And that's continued with me through my career. Um, the Y was a natural suit, and I fell in love with the mission. I believe in the word all, and I believe the Y believes in all. And I'm excited that that has been part of my career for the last sixteen years. It's hard to believe you actually get paid to play kickball, real life. And it's a pretty good job. And, uh, I'm excited that at about three o'clock this afternoon, there's about, I don't know, a dozen twelve-year-olds that think they're gonna beat me at a game of Jelly Ball, and they're surprisingly wrong. Miss Cat is competitive, and I plan to win and take them out rather quickly. We'll go to the next slide. For me, Rotary has quickly became about family. And as I look back with my boys, as you see them there, uh, we're acutely reminded that the work that we do as a community is important, but how we raise our family is equally important. And that if I was blessed to be drug along to every Fairmore meeting, 4-H council meeting, Farm Bureau membership meeting, Appreciation Day, Senior Tea, Nursing Home Sing-Along, Side of the Road Trash Pickup, right? All the things you have to do in a very small town. I realized that planted a seed. And it started back in rural northeast Missouri. And what was I gonna do with that? Was I going to raise kids that I wanted to either instill that seed in? Or was I gonna raise kids that were able to lay witness firsthand to what service and action looks like? I am ever aware that there is a four-way test that hangs in both of their elementary schools. I am evidently aware that nothing is done with that four-way test, that it hangs there as the fixture of something that was there. And as the PTA secretary, it still bothers me to see that. Don't ever be the PTA secretary. That is a service project. You need to let somebody else point a fact, okay? But I, if, if it's not going to happen there, it has to happen somewhere. So most of the time, you see these two little rascals and tote with me. Why? They can't sit still just like their mom. We are not lay on the couch and watch TV people. We are experienced people. We are memory-making. And I'm ever so humbled that one of their favorite activities during COVID was running through the flags at the Field of Honor. They were wonderfully adorable escorts and, and chair and stair guides at the Rotary District Dinner. If you've ever seen anybody good, the youngest one managed to get about a hundred grownups in suits and tuxes to line up single file and hold the rail and be safe on the steps. Nobody could fall. Um, and he commanded those stairs. Karen did not know that that was a job that she was going to need to add to the sign-up genius moving forward, but they'll suit up and be there. I believe that there is a place for family in Rotary. And I believe that as we challenge and we want to grow our membership to what Dennis said, that there's an opportunity for us to embrace what makes each of us unique, what makes our neighbors unique. And some of that may involve bringing kids. It may involve developing household memberships. It may involve having a couple Rotary meetings throughout the year at Hat Creek where the kids can run a play, and then they can see all of us stand up and recite the four-way test. When they hear us see it and they hear us say it, and then they hear it, they see us live it and do it. We then planted the seed. And I imagine that if we get out of these walls and we begin to showcase the good, the good that this firm is able to accomplish, a hundred and fifty isn't gonna be an issue. It's gonna be, we're out of tables and chairs. And that's where we gain members, and that's where we gain love, is we have to never forget to showcase the good. This year, Jennifer Jones has challenged us to imagine Rotary. And as I imagine Rotary, I often imagine a world without Rotary. I did not grow up in a world with Rotary. But this should be our picture, this should be our video at the end of the year. Hit it, Ken. So with your help, let's imagine a new year. Thank you very much. I had this sentence down pretty good, as customary for the presenter to sign a book and donate to our friends over at Pearl Elementary. Uh, however, since today was the inaugural day that our board was sworn in, I'm actually gonna ask that our incoming board for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, please sign this book on your way out so we can mark the milestone of this new board taking shape. So if you all would do that for me on your way out, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay, look at that, we're even on time. Hot dog, here we go. So we have, we got a busy calendar. We got the fish fry tomorrow. Tell Carol Hardy, I put it in there. Goodness, the girl's been coming here to sell that fish fry out for a month, so make the calendar, Carol. You bought the tickets, go in the kayak, go to the fish fry. Eight AM Tuesday, July twelfth, Field of Honor Committee meeting at Mills. Please plan to come. David, thank you for always welcoming us into your space. July fifteenth, we've got our human trafficking program. Roger Chappell's gonna be taking lead on that. And that's a true, that's a wonderful Rotary Georgetown, Sun City, Sunrise, and our club coming together to really move the needle on human trafficking this year. Ryla Camp is here. Danny has lots of volunteers. He's at a different camp with us this week. But July seventeenth through twenty-second, please keep those campers in your prayers as they go to a new camp with good stuff, that they're gonna get a really good meal from our club. We're excited about that. Racial Unity's got a program on July twenty-second, Ramp Build, July twenty-third. If you're not on this super active, exciting text message thread that is called Ramp Build, you should see Myra at the end of it. It's my favorite text message thread that I'm a part of now. Uh, so please jump into that. If you've never built a ramp, please add that to your calendar as you can. Paul Harris is up on the twenty-ninth, and even more importantly, August fifth and sixth is a multi-district training institute. It's gonna be in Flugerville. It's one of the perks of our governor being in Flugerville. All these things will be very close to us. So please check out the district page for that as you can. Go ahead. So our Minute for Peace. Do you wanna do it? Ron, would you like to come do the Minute for Peace and make your announcement? Since it's all kind of fits together, and I didn't necessarily assign you a minute for peace today, but since you're the chair, it might be fitting for you to read this for us today.
Thank you, Kat. Before I read the Minute for Peace, I want to remind the planning committee for the sixtieth anniversary of our club that we're meeting immediately following this meeting in the corner to my left. All members. Mankind must remember that peace is not God's gift to his creatures. Peace is our gift to each other. Eli Whistle.
Sixtieth Club Birthday Party. Pop back right over there. Any other announcements for the good of Rotary from the club? Okay. If you would please join me in the things of the four-way test of the things we think, say, or do. First. Second. Third. Fourth. And fifth. We are adjourned. Thank you.